Wait, wait just a minute, Bob. Let me go make sure the video guy is here.
Oh, okay.
Is he here?
It's not coming.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna call it over to the director of the meeting and the planning commission for June twenty-one.
Sure. Chairperson Jim Sawtell, vice chairperson Robert Momarts.
Here.
Commissioners Phyllis Harden here, Mark Laces.
Here.
Jerry Melia.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Tom Ricker, Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Attorney Hillary Graham, associate planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Okay.
The next item is approving the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
Motion made. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of approving the agenda? Thank you. This is a portion of the meeting where there's public comment on non-agenda items. If there's any speaker, please, when you arrive at the deus podium, just announce your name and where you live. Thank you.
George Cuffner, seventy-five twenty. How are you guys tonight?
Good.
I had a couple of questions for you guys about some grazing rights on town open space, agricultural grazing rights on Town Superior open space. I went to Ostac and they pointed me to your guys' direction. And I'm here tonight to ask if you guys can change the zoning. It's gonna be allowed to be permitted. I have some paperwork here I'll hand out with some maps, with some acreage that the Town of Superior owns for open space that I could see be beneficial for grazing.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you have an extra one or two, because we have a couple of members that...
Should be.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
What I, excuse me, what I have highlighted in pink is where it says livestock and livestock boarding on open space where X is prohibited. And if you open up these pages here that I have, you have fifteen point six acres behind the Remington right here, just adjacent to my property. There's fifteen point six acres, as well as right here in Old Town Superior, right here at Third and Depot, right here. There's eleven point six three acres, which the Town of Superior owns, but is not fenced. Now, keep this in mind, that cattle, agricultural grazing is permitted there through the county, but it's not permitted through the town. But the Town of Superior owns the land, but it's not fenced. Okay? If you go to the next page, six point five acres, which is a Shin Chan property right here to the south of us. And the main reason why it's here is because I came down before and talked at public comment, a regular town board meeting, and kinda got some mixed directions on where to go from our mayor. So I started. I do sit on the Prozac chair up there as well. Asked those guys, kicked the idea around, and now I'm starting right here. Started back last week with Ostac and got their opinion about it, and they said this is more of a zoning. So it's why I'm here, for the planning commission to reconsider on rezoning this and taking it to the next level, which is town board level, to have them make a motion and pass this through. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I'm assuming, Mr. Cuffner, that you have livestock that you'd like to have, be able to graze there?
Absolutely, yes, I do.
And what type of livestock?
Cows and horses.
And has that previously been allowed?
In the last, in last year's, yes. Before the development bought it, we had at least, over there in between my uncle and I, Rick Cuffner's place and our place, we ran cows on it for a little while. Then the developer bought it, and then after that, we just kinda went away. But there's, we got cows here and there, all over the county, with county leases. So I figured I might as well see if I can bring them closer to home and keep an eye on them.
So how many, how many cows and horses would you be looking to...
Well, the deal is, it's, the deal is that there's three different pastures that there is, and they're all pretty close to each other. And what county does, it's four head per acre. So it's four, four cows per acre of land. So if you figure like on fifteen acres, you'd run, I don't know, you'd run probably maybe twelve head, just to keep it comfortable, to keep the grass, not always looking down there where it's dirt, but you keep it fairly about six inches down versus three foot high. And this is just a start. I'm gonna talk to Parks and Rec and see what other open space there is available, like on the side of one twenty-eight and McCaslin up around through that area. Up there where the big grass fire happened this last summer, up there around, or through Yarrow Circle, up through that area. I think it could be very, very beneficial in the towns to try this, just temporarily try this, try this and see how well it works, and if it works great, we keep it. If not, no hard feelings.
How would you like us to address this this evening, Mr. Cuffner?
I would like you guys to address this by making a motion to take this to the next town board meeting. Make a motion to pass this. Yes, this is a great idea to change the zoning, or it's a bad idea. Or put it on the agenda for the next planning commission.
I guess my question then is for Stephen and for Hillary to, if you have a private citizen who's looking to change the zoning on town land.
Right. So, the public comment... Public comment period is for one-way communication. So what typically would happen is the board will listen and take it under advisement, and then if one of you wishes to pursue it and there's a majority, then that's how things would unfold. But at this point, there's nothing to act on. There's nothing agendized.
Okay.
And there's no formal application, so.
This is where I'm told to start, to get this rezoned, because you guys are the planning commission.
Right.
So this is where I'm starting. I started last week at Ostac meeting. They directed me here. So where do I go now? Back to town board on a Monday night and say, listen, everybody's pointing fingers, so where are we going? What's the direction we need to be? I lived in this town for thirty-three years.
I would suggest coming into the office and talking to Martin and Matt and I, or just myself, and we can start looking into it.
I've talked to Martin and I've talked to Matt Magley about this, and this is the direction that we're pointing me to, is coming down and talking, speaking. This is where I'm at. So do I need to come look for you, Steve, tomorrow?
You can come chat with me.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, we can look at the, I mean, I'm not familiar with the zoning, and I'd have to look into it more to speak definitively about what your next steps are. But as I, you know, I would assume that, as you've explained it, you're saying that it's in one of these designations, the open space R or the open space N, which is not permitted, and it would take a zoning change and a formal process in order to get our code amended to allow it in those locations.
So I'll come and talk to you tomorrow?
Can, yeah. I'll be here.
Perfect. I'll be here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? So we'll move on to item number five, which is a public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending approval of a final development plan in McCaslin roundabout Main Street within Superior Town Center. Development Plan One, Phase Three. Staff have something to say?
Sure. I'll introduce the application. Stephen Williams, Town staff. Phyllis, do you mind turning off the lights so we can see the projector a little better? So this is for Final Development Plan Phase, or Final Development Plan One, Phase Three. Phase One was primarily Main Street. It kinda wrapped around in a little bit of Superior Drive and a section of Old Railway. Phase Two is streets kind of in this northern section of Planning Area Three. And because this is the next horizontal infrastructure project that's related to the Town Center, this is gonna be FDP One, Phase Three, and it concerns a roundabout that's kind of always been anticipated for McCaslin as it intersects with Main Street. The, I'm just gonna touch on a few kinda pieces of the application, and then I'm gonna hand it over to our Public Works Director, Alex Aronella, who is gonna kinda give a roundabout one-on-one and then go through the application in more detail. But the, kind of the nuances of the application are, it doesn't just involve the right-of-way. The right-of-way is owned by the town, so the town's a co-applicant on this application with RC Superior. But it also impacts Parcel A and Parcel B, which are just north and south of Main Street. It impacts a portion of Main Street, and then it involves a right-of-way dedication on the west side of McCaslin, which is part of the Rogers property, which RC Superior also owns. And so that's something that will be dedicated as part of this application. We'll have to see that that instrument gets recorded, should this approval be, or should it be approved by the town board. That's about all I have. I'll hand it over to Alex.
Alex Aronella, Director of Public Works for the town. And as Stephen had mentioned, the town is co-applicant on this FDP with Ranch Capital, RC, with RC Superior LLC. In October two thousand and twelve, a planned development, zone district plan was approved, and it's since been amended in August of two thousand and thirteen, in May of two thousand and fourteen, and just this year in April of two thousand and sixteen, to accommodate certain changes in design. But a multi-use roundabout shown at this location at Main Street and McCaslin was shown on all the PD plans that were approved for this development. So... So why a roundabout? Several reasons for this particular location. And first, it eliminates the need for left-turn lanes, which allows the intersection of the internal roundabout. So we have an internal roundabout that's, has been already approved, and so allowed these two intersections to be close, fairly close together, because you didn't have left-turn lanes here, didn't have left turns, so they were able to be located closer together than normal. It also allowed, we have a left-turn lane northbound going to Coal Creek, and that left-turn lane and this left-turn were fairly close, so that allowed this intersection to be located fairly close to the bridge and at the bottom of the downgrade on McCaslin. So that was important. There was also a desire to lower speeds on McCaslin as you come down the hill and then come down into Regional Superior and as you approach Marshall McCaslin and then that diverging diamond. It also would facilitate access into and out of the Town Center, and I'll try to demonstrate that in a few minutes. And finally, it was safer than, we felt safer than a traffic signal. So what makes a modern roundabout? And living in Superior, you've been familiar with at least three roundabouts that we have. And the principles are, first, that it functions on the yield-on-entry principle. The yield and the circulating roadway has the right-of-way, so you have to yield to the traffic within the circle. Different than the old traffic circles that were built decades ago. And that principle is, allows roundabouts to be much smaller and allows very efficient operations of the roundabout. Second, there's deflection with splitter islands that, as you, you don't come straight into a roundabout. You get deflected, and what that does is provide a, if you do have an accident, it's a low angle accident, a much less severe accident than a head-on accident would be. There also, there's also pedestrian refuge, which makes it safer for pedestrians. Some of the other advantages of roundabout are they're more efficient and higher capacity. They're, they have lower maintenance costs. You don't have a traffic signal that you have to operate and maintain. They're safer, and I'll describe why they're safe in a minute here. They're more aesthetically pleasing. If you go up to the one at Center Drive and Fifth, you know, we have a nice statue in the center, and you can put a lot of things in the center as opposed to a large, singleized intersection where it's just a sea of pavement. Also because traffic is flowing continuously, it has lower energy consumption, and thus slower vehicle emissions. So why are roundabouts safer? Well, first, there's fewer conflict points for vehicles, cyclists, and pedestrians. A typical four-way intersection has thirty-two conflict points, with left turners crossing through traffic, right turners crossing pedestrians and so forth. So there's thirty-two conflict points for vehicles, and that with a roundabout, that gets reduced to eight conflict points. Similar with pedestrians. Pedestrians have twenty-four conflict points, and that gets reduced to eight. You have lower speeds, so in that, in a, of itself contributes to a much safer environment, because you're traveling twenty, twenty-five miles hour, an hour through the roundabout. So if you do have a collision, it's a much lower speed than if you have a T-bone intersection at a high rate of speed. The geometry reduces the severity of collisions. Again, you don't have the T-bone. You have, when you do have an accident, it's normally a low-angle collision. The pedestrian crossing distances are shorter. You're not crossing eighty or a hundred feet of pavement. You're crossing one or two lanes to get from one side into the pedestrian refuge, and then from there, you go to the other side, and then pedestrians only have to look in one direction as they cross traffic. So the safety benefits have been demonstrated in numerous studies. FHWA and Federal Insurance, the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, conducted this study where they looked at typical intersections before and after a roundabout was put in, and they looked at accidents before there was put in and then afterwards. And they found, this is kind of summarizing whether it was a, there was no traffic signal there before, it was just a two-way stop or a four-way stop or a traffic signal. This kinda summarizes that generally, overall collisions go down by about thirty-seven percent when you implement a roundabout over whatever was there before. But the biggest thing, and why I've advocated roundabouts throughout my last twenty years, I became first involved in roundabouts in nineteen ninety-five, where the injury collisions go down substantially, seventy-five percent reduction in injury collisions. And in fact, for fatalities, it's a ninety percent. I would say it's probably much more a ninety percent reduction in fatalities. And then for pedestrians itself, you might say pedestrians have a hard time. Well, pedestrian collisions go down forty percent. So these are national studies. They've looked at roundabouts around the country, and these are the overall statistics. A little different between, single-lane roundabouts tend to be much, much safer, have probably greater safety benefits than multi-lane roundabouts that we're doing, considering tonight. But still, the safety benefits, even a multi-lane roundabout versus a traffic signal are significant. Just last week, we had a fatal accident up at Nywhart Road and two eighty-seven. I don't know if you read that in the paper. Someone, a gal, ten o'clock during the day, gal was turning left from two eighty-seven northbound, turning left onto Nywhart Road. Semi truck was going southbound. She was making left turn. She didn't, she misjudged the thing. She got killed. This'll never happen at a roundabout. So this is to me why I do this and promote roundabouts, is that we, we have much better, safer benefits. Roundabouts don't apply to all intersections, but this is a good potential one to implement a roundabout. Even in, in our town, we've compiled accidents over the last five years. This is a summary of five-year accident data in Town of Superior, looking at all the singleized intersections and at the roundabouts. The size of the circle is proportional to the number of accidents over that time period. You can guess Marshall McCaslin had the most accidents up there. The green slivers are the injury accidents that occurred at those intersections. You see, at most of the singleized intersections, we had injury accidents during that five-year period. Roundabouts, we had one, at Eighty-Eighth and Rock Creek Parkway. None at Colton and McCaslin, and none at Center and Fifth. So again, we've had similar experience. We don't have the, we did have one here at Eighty-Eighth and Rock Creek Parkway, but it's, compared to the other ones, we are getting accidents at our singleized, injury accidents at our singleized intersections. Okay, this chart's a little hard. I wanna demonstrate some of the traffic benefits of the roundabout versus the traffic signal at the Marshall, the McCaslin, Main Street intersection. What we did here was we took projected twenty thirty-five traffic volumes. So when, when the Town Center's all built out, when we had traffic increasing through traffic coming through McCaslin, and we calculated with our traffic engineering models what level of service would be and what queue lengths would be. These are the comparisons. A lot of numbers here, so I wanna walk you through the intersection. Top part is the weekday AM period, twenty thirty-five. The bottom part is the PM peak hour. This is the traffic signal. These are the traffic signal columns, and this is the roundabout columns. We have average delay on each movement. So we have northbound through, southbound through, and then westbound through. This is coming at Main Street. Here, you can see the numbers here, almost sixty seconds for the side-street movements, the eastbound and westbound movements. Level of service is a term that engineers do to rate congestion on a scale of A to F. So A is free-flowing conditions. F is kind of gridlock. You wanna, for our standard, we'd like to have level of service C in a town. We would accept level of service D. Level of service E is not a very good thing to have. You wait, you end up waiting on that approach about a minute with level of service E. So a couple of things to point out. We do penalize somewhat the southbound movements in the, in the morning period. The southbound through, for example, with a traffic signal would have four point seven seconds of delay, all the southbound traffic, whereas with a roundabout, would go about five seconds, about doubled to nine point four seconds. So that's about the only one that gets penalized. Northbound gets penalized a little bit. But if you look at all the side-street movements, the southbound left turn, fifty-six seconds, but with a traffic signal, and that goes down to fifteen point nine. Coming out of the Town Center, you would have, let's say we're making the westbound left turn. You're coming out, you wanna turn left and go, go south, would have fifty-six point seven seconds, and that would be reduced by about half. So that's when I say, when we'll facilitate access in and out of the Town Center, the roundabout provides a much better level of service than a, than a traffic signal, because a traffic signal is gonna prioritize McCaslin and keep McCaslin flowing, and that access into and out of the Town Center will be penalized, and they'll get the wait. So anyway, all the approach, all the movements with a roundabout or a level of service C or better, and the overall level of service in the morning peak hour is level of service B. In the evening, again, all the movements are level of service C or better, and the overall level of service is B versus C with a traffic signal. The overall delay in the PMP peak period is twenty-one point nine seconds, and that would go down with a, with a roundabout to fourteen point one seconds. Okay, so it's hard to, to vis, to make sense out of all those numbers. Let me show you how it really looks. So we'll show you a traffic signal. This is in twenty thirty-five, the PM peak period. Show you what a traffic signal looks like, how it would operate at this particular intersection. And you can see, you know, we have queues standing back on the, on the northbound direction. You see Marshall releases a platoon, flows through. We have pretty good progression there, flowing through, southbound. And then you'll see the traffic coming up from Town Center. Look at the southbound left. We have the queues coming in, those building up. In this particular case, we almost had a lax in there. You'll see some accidents. Just jump that a little farther. I wanna show you one thing that happens here. And this is actually the way this was operating. It had a permitted operation, which probably we wouldn't do in the, in the actual, we'd probably have a protected red arrow there. So watch this truck waiting to go through the intersection, and it's blocking the right-turn acceleration lane. And we'll see how that queue builds up. And one more, one thing that worries me, if we do decide to go to a traffic signal, this left turn extends back. We don't have much room on the bridge to accommodate a long left turn lane.
So, Alex, real quick, can we go back to, just...
You want me to back it up?
Just pause it right there. Can you show us where on the, on the northbound lane, as everybody's coming down the hill, where, where is the slope, finally, the grade starting to level out?
Well, I think it, it levels off probably about a hundred, two hundred feet there. What do we get down to, about three percent? So I think for about two hundred feet, it gets down to, to two to three percent.
So there's still a significant slope coming into, so as those cars backing up, you've got a significant slope coming into that?
And again, that's a big issue that we have. Do we want a roundabout? I mean, it's two issues. You have a roundabout, you're coming down the hill, you have to slow up because you're gonna make a curve. Okay. But you know it's there, and you know you're gonna have to slow down. With a traffic signal, you can fly through most of the time, but when you have to stop, you gotta slam on your brakes, and look, look where this queue is. The back of that queue is right, probably where it's pretty steep. So I mean, you have a trade-off here, because most of the time, those, the through traffic can go through, you won't have to stop. In slick conditions, if you have to stop for a light and not expecting it, you know, you could be in trouble. So whether a roundabout is, is better or worse in icy conditions at the bottom of the hill, I kinda think that you know it's there, you know you have to slow up. So that's probably a better situation than not knowing, because you could have a real serious accident if you try to make that yellow light and get caught.
Right.
Okay, we'll look at the PM condition for a roundabout. Again, a roundabout, what we're doing here, we have two lanes coming in, and this portion of the roundabout doesn't quite show it here, but on our plans, is one lane here and one lane here. So this lane, southbound, has the choice to go through or make the left turn. Then you see the queue. So we do have platoons coming down. And again, there, there's queuing there, but that queue is always moving. It's not stopped. And one, one thing about the roundabout. So we have some periods of AM and peak hour where we have some, some congestion, but we probably have twenty to twenty-two hours a day when we have pretty good operations where you don't have much of a queue at all. And probably eight hours where everything's free-flowing during night. There's no, you know, you just come up, there's probably no cars around, and you go on your way. So that, let me just show you the AM. You may be interested, the heavy traffic. So we, in the AM, we have a heavy traffic going south... So, in the AM, we have a heavy traffic going southbound. This is interesting that we have that much traffic in the morning coming down. And you've all been through McCaslin, Colton, and you see how hard... Sometimes it's hard for the westbound traffic to get in. I think we're going to have more left turners here, and what the left turn traffic does is break up that through traffic and provide some brakes for traffic to get into the roundabout. Okay? Again, I told you about the good... Real good level of service for 20, 22 hours a day, free-flowing for 10 hours a day. Pedestrians have level of service A or B for almost all the time. They come up, they get priority, you know, they make eye contact with the vehicles coming into the roundabout, and they get to go across. And we'll talk about pedestrian protection we're planning here. So, to put this in context, where that roundabout will go, the Coal Creek Bridge is right up here, so it'll be over 250, 300 feet north of the bridge. It'll be... We'll have to take out a portion of the median. We'll get splitter islands put in, and we'll have a bypass lane for the right-turning traffic into an acceleration lane. This shows you the contours of where we'll have to fill. So, McCaslin right now is up higher than the surrounding land. They're filling this area here. There'll be some temporary fill, but eventually it'll... It's almost filled. So, this will be all kind of at the same grade as Main Street. Here, it drops off substantially, so they'll have to build up this platform to allow that approach to be built. Wanted to show you this plan, to show you the lanage. So, again, northbound coming into the roundabout, the outside lane could be through or right. So, this car can go through or make a right. This car should be lined up, will have signing and pavement markings to say if you want to make a left turn, don't get in this lane, get in that inside lane, so you can end up in this lane. So, it'll only be one lane here. So, once you get in that lane, you can either go through or around the roundabout and make your left. Couple of other things that are occurring. The configuration of these crosswalks looks a little strange, but what we're trying to do here is, at the entry to the roundabout, you want the vehicles to be ahead of the crosswalk, so they're not having to look at both pedestrians and a vehicle. So, they get past the crosswalk, they're doing their yielding to the pedestrians before they get to the roundabout entry. So, they're going to see a pedestrian here, they're going to yield right here, go past the crosswalk, and then yield to the circulating traffic. So, we want one or two car lengths past the crosswalk to be able to be there and have sight distance to judge traffic getting into the roundabout. Coming out, little bit different. The exiting from the roundabouts, we put about at least two car lengths here, because if a pedestrian comes here, these cars have to yield to them, and we don't want cars backing up into the circulating roadway. So, we provide a little bit more length between the crosswalk and the circulating roadway to provide a little more distance for those vehicles to stack while pedestrians go across. So, the other thing that's happening and what's happening in the industry in terms of multi-lane approaches is that because of the impaired community, the visually impaired have difficulty judging, when you have multi-lane approaches, the two vehicles, knowing whether there's two vehicles or not. And they're using their hearing, and it's hard for them to hear and figure out whether there's two vehicles. So, the ADA, African disabilities guidelines say you should be signalizing multi-lane approaches. So, we're not going to singleize here, but we're going to put the rapid rectangular... Rapid flashing beacons, like the ones we installed up on Rock Creek Parkway, push button and the flashing yellow lights, is what we're going to be installing at all the roundabout crosswalks. So, we will have that added protection for pedestrians to give them safer crossings for the... And these will also be concrete, colored concrete crossings as well. So, I wanted to... One of the capacity issues we had was the amount of traffic heading west out of town center and going north up to the US 36 and DDI. And this was kind of a... We went back and forth, do we put in that extra lane right now, or do we wait until it builds up? So, we went ahead, and we're building it now, and this will be a bypass lane. So, unlike Colton, Colton has the same problem at McCaslin, the roundabout, a lot of traffic coming out, and it's a heavy northbound. So, those vehicles have a hard time getting into the roundabout. So, this is a bypass lane for that traffic. They'll bypass this, and they'll have an acceleration lane. And in fact, at some point, we'll have three lanes. That acceleration lane will actually become a through lane at Marshall, because there's through lanes, three lanes going over the DDI. So, eventually add another lane at Marshall, and that this acceleration lane will become a through lane essentially. One of the issues we have with that was that the bikes... Go back on bikes, the way we're treating bikes. As you know, if you've seen our roundabouts, bikes have... Can either go through the roundabout as a vehicle, so they can come and take up a whole lane. We don't want to provide a bike lane in a circulating roadway, because, A, we build it bigger, becomes faster, and that defeats the purpose of having slow speeds through the roundabout. So, we don't want bike lanes through the roundabout, and again, we don't want them on this side, especially if they have to make the left turns. So, the cyclists, the professional-type cyclists can go through the roundabout as a vehicle, take up a lane, and the travel speed, you know, you're going 12, 15 miles an hour through the roundabout versus a vehicle speed of 20, 25 miles an hour. So, you're going pretty close to what the vehicles are traveling. But we give the bikes a choice. Here, the bike lane terminates, there's a ramp up to the sidewalk, so the more intimidated bicyclists have that option to go up on the sidewalk and go through the roundabout as a pedestrian essentially. And they have that choice right now at Colton, McCaslin. So, what we were worried about here is that bikes coming up, and we have this bypass lane, protective bypass lane, we needed to get them over across the acceleration lane. So, what we're going to be putting in are these markings, which are green markings. If you've seen Boulder, they have some of these green markings. The green markings with outline with white as special markings to get the bikes across the acceleration lane into the bike lane to go on up to Marshall. Lighting. This is the Cobra head style lighting that we're going to be using on McCaslin, up and down the median. They're the Cobra style lighting. All the lighting, all the light poles that are being replaced now, a lot of them are the green painted ones, which are corroding. So, we've decided, at least on McCaslin, to go with galvanized steel. So, these will all be galvanized steel around the roundabout, and eventually all the ones on McCaslin will be galvanized. They'll have the Cobra head style fixtures, and these will be LEDs. And we've been working with Excel. Excel finally has a rate for LED fixtures, and they have a program where they'll be changing out all the lights in town, all the Cobra head style lights to LEDs. So, these are the lights that'll be matching the ones throughout town. They just put several of these up at the DDI, if you want to look at what those look like. Landscaping. So, landscaping, several things on landscaping, but what they were attempting to do here is to match... To match existing median landscaping. I'm not fanning you around about eight years ago, 10 years ago. We used to have a grass line median on McCaslin, and they decided to do more of a native-type landscaping with the rocks and native grasses and so forth, and have some sod alternating with that. So, we're going to take that scheme of the McCaslin medians and carry it through some of the medians that we'll be rebuilding with the splitter islands, put kind of heavy intensive landscaping in the middle, some trees in the center, some low shrubs. Throughout, the mixture of some sod and some urban-type landscaping to the south. One of the things we're paying particular attention is sight triangles. So, this dark gray area are all the areas where we need sight distance to look at circulating roadways and so forth, but this area here, we don't need to see through the roundabout. So, this area here can have some vertical elements, can have some trees. In fact, you want trees in there. You want to give people a clue that there's something in the middle of the roadway, and it's a roundabout. So, we want some vertical elements. There's three trees proposed. You may want to... We have a recommendation later on, maybe we should have a work of art in there, and that be the vertical element, like we have up at the one at Center and Fifth. Phasing, you might want to know how we're going to build this thing, and that's, of course, something that's dear to my heart of how... Because I'm going to get all the calls. So, what we're proposing, what the developers are proposing, I guess, is to build some temporary roadways to take traffic around the roundabout, so build these first, be temporary asphalt, right? Combinating two lanes, right? So, you take two northbound lanes, two southbound lanes around, and then you come into the center, build the center, roundabout, and then splitter islands, put the traffic on the new roundabout lanes. This is fairly simple, because we don't have any intersection traffic at this point. So, then we come back and build the approaches on each side, and then open the roundabout. So, that's how it's going to be, and it's going to be done like in two weeks, right? So, that's how it's going to be. So, from a consistent consistency with previous plans, previous PDs for the town center, the original plan, the three amendments have all shown the roundabout on their plans as a potential feature and way to handle the intersection with McCaslin. So, there's nothing new, we're not changing anything from previous plans. Terms of conformance with the transportation plan, we went through a process on a... Some of you were through that, but we updated the transportation element of the comp plan in February 2014, and it was actually about a two-year process that was a result of numerous public workshops, open houses, surveys, and other forms of public input. In that plan, we have an extensive discussion about roundabouts. We identify McCaslin Main Street roundabout as a future roundabout project. We show it on the roadway plan. So, this is not anything new. We've been talking about this roundabout for several years. So, with that, our recommendation is to approve the resolution in your packet. With these conditions, developers shall make technical corrections that we identify. There's some right-of-way, chunk of right-of-by, about 0.16 acres on the west side, on the Rogers property, that needs to be dedicated for the eastbound approach, and we want that dedicated before we record the final FTP. There was also kind of misunderstanding on the crosswalks. We want them colored concrete. It's shown on one of the plan sheets as concrete pavers. We're concerned about the pavers popping up. We want monolithic concrete, like similar to what we did on the Rock Creek roundabout that we paved. We had one approach, and we had concrete going all the way across. We tried stamped asphalt a few years ago, that wears off. We have pavement markings, they get worn off, and it's pretty hard to get into a roundabout approach when there's not traffic to replenish those. So, we want something that's going to last for 10, 15, 20 years. And then, also, we are suggesting that the applicant work with town staff to install art in the center of the roundabout as approved, as we work together and see what we can come up with. With that, I'll take any questions. Do you want to... Do you guys want to make any comments?
Good evening. Bill Jenks, RC Superior. Just quickly, I want to say thank you for your time to consider the project. Big thank you to Mr. Arnello and the town staff. It's been, you know, the amount of knowledge these guys have about roundabout design is really pretty impressive. We've been working with Landmark Engineering out of San Diego, who are engineering, and this is also... All she does is roundabouts, so it's been a learning experience for me. But, you know, Jim is here from her civil engineer. I think Alex is probably one of the best equipped to answer any questions, but certainly anything we can do to help, we're here to do.
I think you said it, Alex, but what was the timeline?
They're ready to get going late this summer. They want to get going as soon as possible, so we can get most of the construction done before winter. So, I think they're... As soon as you can get the plans, right?
Yeah, we're... So, we'll be submitting, if it gets approved at the board next week, we're going to a town board hearing on the 27th. If that gets approved, we'll be submitting CDs and distributing bid documents immediately after that. We'd expect to award probably the first week in August and get started then. And it's probably realistically a three- to four-month construction schedule, so we really want to finish before December if we can to avoid the snow and all the complication that brings.
So, Alex, I have a question. In the moving model, I saw one looked like it was a semi-trailer, tractor trailer going in, and I think I've lived here... I've been here 15 years, and I don't think I've ever seen a semi going up or down McCaslin in that area, but I'm sure it happens. Going through the roundabout, I think that the way that the roundabout is constructed, it looks like instead of the typical circular roundabout, you do have some angles in there, which becomes more like what they have as the turbo roundabouts found in Europe and everything. But is that the expectation?
So, to accommodate trucks through the roundabout, the big tractor trailers, you know, 65, 70-foot trailers or combination units would make roundabouts too big if we had to accommodate all their turning traffic. So, generally, what we do is we have a truck apron, which is concrete, and there's a roll-up curve three or four inches to allow them to, you know, go through, and their back wheels normally turn up on that. And it's really uncomfortable for traffic to go straight through that. You wouldn't want to do that. So, it keeps the passenger vehicles off, but allows the trucks to be able to make that movement and still limit the size of the roundabout. So, these will be truck and all rated for trucks to drive over those. And the actual geometry for the roundabout is more to accommodate, you know, one lane turning, so we don't really need two lanes through here. So, that's why this geometry for the Center Island came out the way it did.
Okay. And then, coming from the south end, heading north, going into the roundabout, in the model, there was a car on the left, in the left lane, that wound up, as it went into the circle, it stopped? And it waited a while, and then it did the right turn. Is there any way to kind of divide... Well, I guess that would cause issues with snowplows and everything. I was wondering if there's a way to divide the lanes to prevent cars from doing that, so if they find themselves in that situation, they just go around and they come through.
Right, yeah. So, we'll have, you know, striping here, we'll have signing that kind of gives the lane assignments. And this is kind of the practice that's evolved when roundabouts first came to America. The Brits were saying, "Yeah, you don't need any striping or whatever. Let them go wherever they want." In America, people like to know which lane they need to get in. So, we've given them the lane markings and the signing to allow. And I think most people after... I mean, people that live here in town will know which lanes to get to. Different than the DDI, you probably haven't figured that out yet. Different than the DDI, you probably haven't figured that out yet.
I have one question for you, Alex. Would there be a way to add signage at the top of the hill as we're going northbound on McCaslin, to let traffic know that they are coming up on this roundabout, so that they know to slow down and not wait till they get to the 3% or 4% grade to hit the brakes?
Sure, good point. One of the other things, and I'm not sure if we're going to do that, but to try, for high-speed approaches, roundabout practice is to introduce a couple of curves. So as you're coming down, you want to introduce a wider radius curve here, and then a sharper curve, so you can have this spiral coming in to slow traffic down. And that's what we introduced actually down on Colton. If you're southbound on Colton, you notice that median design is such that has two curves in there to try to bring that speeds down gradually to, because you're going from 45 miles an hour to 20, 25 miles an hour, so you want to bring that down gradually. So we just recently opened that to see what we can do here, and what kind of modification we can make if that, if it's even feasible. But we want to bring that, especially high-speed approaches. Not as big a problem here as when you're going uphill, but certainly this approach is something we need to make sure we treat as best we can to get traffic to slow down. But your point, your comment is a good one, to get signing up above to get that traffic coming down to a slower speed.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think to piggyback off of Anthony's comment would be the speed limit. Currently, it's 45 miles an hour coming down that hill. And so with the advent of creating the circle, the roundabout, you know, reducing that speed starting at Rock Creek Parkway, heading northbound on McCaslin, having it be, you know, like 35 or 30 or something like that, and slowing them down from the top. Because besides the high-speed approach, I think controlling that speed further down McCaslin, and signage, of course, preparing them for what's coming. But I've lived here for several years, and in the last couple of years, I've noticed a lot of ice buildup along McCaslin on that downhill, on that northbound side.
Right.
And I've seen some cars spin out, I've also seen a lot of cars spin out coming up the hill, going south on McCaslin. Is there, is there anything we can do about that? Is there something Public Works can do, maybe salt that, or?
It's always our top priority, that's the one we're always hitting first. And in fact, I've thought about, there was putting, we were not putting concrete. I wanted to put concrete and putting, using the rebar to heat the rebar, you know, put electric charge in the heat wall.
Yeah.
Didn't go for that, yeah. Or putting a de-icing system here and kind of spraying de-icing with it. So there's, that's way out there. But we will hit this first and see what we can do to try to get as good of ice control. It's probably harder getting up, because people slip out, you know.
Sure.
So it's definitely one thing that keeps me up at night, how am I going to deal with this?
Yeah.
But either that or traffic signal would have been the same kind of issue. You have a slick surface coming down, and you've got to stop at a light, and...
Right, right. Okay. And then just one last question from myself. You touched on this a little bit, Alex, but how will this accommodate future growth in the area?
So the traffic projections were based on full buildout of town center, and full buildout of all the vacant parcels in town to the zoning, what the zoning would allow. Plus, we added about a 10% increase in background traffic due to growth from outside the area. So some of it's built in. I think the limiting factor more is not here, it's probably south of Rock Creek Parkway, where we only have two lanes, yet you only can get so much traffic through those two lanes. So that's going to be the limiting factor, but it's kind of scary what's going on down at Candela's and some areas down in Norvada. So we did allow for some growth, but certainly not huge amounts of growth, but I think it'll be the two-lane section of McCaslin that really dictates how much traffic gets up here. This is designed, multi-lane roundabouts can handle about 5,000 vehicles, 5,000 entering vehicles per hour, is probably the maximum limit for a two-lane roundabout. These projections are about just under 4,000 vehicles per hour, so we still have some growth that we can accommodate with the roundabout. But, you know, we're accommodating, this capacity here kind of matches the rest of McCaslin, and probably more than the two-lane section.
And that includes the addition of the third entry lane, or high-speed entry lane?
Here.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah. This accommodates that, and this one we didn't really need right away, but for the full buildout. So this will operate like a regular acceleration lane now, but eventually we'll add that third lane up through to Marshall, because that's going to be more of a limiting factor, that's going to start to back up, and we want to make sure there's plenty of capacity through Marshall.
Is the existing bridge, is it, can it handle the third lane?
Yes.
Okay.
Fred, you had touched on cyclists coming through the cycle, the circle, the roundabout, and on the north side of the roundabout, where you've got the cyclists continuing to go to the right, yes, right there. You know, in my experience, I've seen the cyclists that come down McCaslin in that direction, they all want to cut down Coal Creek Drive through original town, Old Town Superior here, or take a left on McCaslin, or on Marshall Road. And so they all kind of drift across between, like where the circle is and Coal Creek Drive or Marshall Road, they all, they all...
Certainly, this will help them, because they'll be able to go around, through the roundabout and at a speed that is closer to what the vehicles are doing. Right now, they probably cross vehicles that are going 40 miles an hour. So here, they can actually get into the approach sooner. If they come in here, they can actually, you know, weave over, because this vehicle, all these vehicles are slowing down, they can get into that inside lane and then keep going through.
Yeah. Is there, is there any room for a cyclist on the inside, north of the circle?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have room for a bike lane, but it becomes, I mean, if they're here, they'll be honked at by the following traffic. But I mean, that's happening now, you've seen that.
Yeah.
The other thing that we have right here at the bridge is we have the underpass. Cyclists can go around the bridge, then get off at the Coal Creek Regional Trail, and go under McCaslin there, and get back up.
They can pull into the town center and get a cup of coffee, and then go down and hit the path.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
I believe I have.
One question. What is the speed going through the roundabout?
Well, we want speeds in the 20 to 22 mile an hour. We would probably sign it for 20. I know the Colton roundabout is probably 15, but I think we'll probably sign this for 20.
Because it's double lane?
Yeah.
We can do 20.
Yeah, that's a little bigger.
So go northbound between the roundabout and the DDI, are you going to leave that at 20 or 25 miles an hour, and not increase the speed?
We will probably leave that, probably at 30, isn't it 30 on the DDI? It's 25, let me go back. We'll probably bring that, the speed down from Marshall to Coal Creek.
Down to Marshall.
I think about probably 35.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Public comment?
Thanks, Alex.
I don't think I have anything to add now. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer it. I mean, so staff does, you know, a review of this as well. We reviewed it for conformance with FTP standards, we reviewed it for conformance with landscaping and all those type of standards, and we're recommending approval, so.
Just from a protocol standpoint, fellas, I forgot to ask you if there's proof of publication.
And I thought of that, too.
I don't want to end the presentation, so I do, we can do it now.
Yeah, we can do it now, and yes, I do have proof of publication.
That being the case, does anybody want to make a motion regarding Resolution PC nine?
Should we have discussion?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to do discussion first.
Okay.
So I'll jump right in. I think that that was an excellent presentation, and I had written down five or six questions on my pad, which were all answered during the course of that presentation, so thank you, that was a very, very good job, very thorough, thank you. My questions are answered, and I think that it is a well-designed project. I do think that it would meet the needs of the town center as well as the traffic on McCaslin. So I would not have any reservations with moving forward with that.
Well, I've heard Alex's presentations before, so I'm kind of a fan of roundabouts versus traffic signals. I just think it works better. Instead of stop and go, you have kind of a continual flow, and I mean, that makes more sense.
Yeah, I think the documented proof of roundabouts and their safety are well-documented, so it's the right choice for this entrance. I also like to, I'm sure we'll get this down the road, but maybe some signage from RC Superior, that would be the entrance to the, one of the entrances to the town center. That'd be a very nice marquee out there on McCaslin.
I think with the roundabouts, I think a lot of people look at it as almost like a traffic deterrent, but they do, they are more efficient, they push more traffic, and I think to your point about Candela's and everything that's going to be happening south of 128 and everything, is kind of a scary thought that all that traffic that's going to be cutting through, or could be possibly cutting through, it's almost, it's almost inviting them to come through, because the roundabout's going to be more efficient, but I think it's a minimal impact, and it's more something that we need to focus on as far as getting people within Superior through the intersection faster, and I think it's a great idea. My biggest concern was that having a traffic light there, and people coming down the hill at full speed during the winter, and traffic backing up, there's not enough time to stop if they hit some ice, like you suggested, and you've witnessed it, that if there's a traffic light there, traffic is going to back up during the winter, and there's going to be some accidents, so I think that roundabout's a good way to, you know, mitigate that as well.
And I think that this particular site, you know, at the base of that hill, I mean, it's probably the single fastest location for vehicles to travel in the town of Superior, just based on the slope that people are traveling down McCaslin, so a roundabout is certainly the, I think, the best means to slow traffic down and to increase safety. I know, I think it was maybe a year or two ago, they were playing around with changing the speeds, and nobody was following the new speed limits, because it's just, you're just traveling too fast, and gravity's taking you down, so I think with the roundabout there, it's going to force you to actually slow down. So I'm in full favor of it.
And I think, real quick, the comment about artwork or statue or whatever would go in the center, with that being such a, you know, a focal point leading into the town center, it will be, you know, it's a great place for public art and everything, so I definitely think that's something that in the future, we need to have a consideration. I like that thought.
I agree, I agree. I also think there are some conditions that staff pointed out that we need to also include in our resolution if we move forward with that. I do like the idea of the colored concrete as opposed to either painted or pavers. Pavers pop up and create more of a hazard sometimes than what they're worth aesthetically, so I think we certainly would need to include that.
Ready to move forward? Undertake a motion regarding...
Mr. Vice Chair, could I interrupt quickly? Right, so as, because it's a hearing, can we, could you ask whether there's anybody from the audience who wishes to comment?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here that'd like to comment in addition to what's already been said? Okay, to move forward? Anybody want to make a motion regarding...
No.
Do you want to, pardon? Can I close the hearing?
Yep, you have to close the public hearing?
We're going to close the public hearing.
Do you have your mic on?
I thought I did, I may have accidentally turned it off.
Okay.
Now we can go ahead.
Yep, now.
Anybody wish to make a motion regarding Resolution PC nine?
I'll make a motion. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of a final development plan from the McCaslin roundabout at Main Street within Town Superior Development Plan One, Phase Three, which is Resolution Number PC dash nine, series 2016, subject to the four conditions that were outlined in Mr. Aronello's presentation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Any staff announcements, or?
Oh yeah, one more agenda item. It should be pretty brief, but Agenda Item Six regards...
The height of...
The height of cell towers within public right-of-way. So that's just a minor change or addition to Chapter 16 of the town code, clarifying that the maximum height for co-location of telecom facilities on town-owned property or within public rights-of-way would be 40, 40 feet? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's just a minor change, because we've had, our attorneys have brought to attention that within the state of Colorado, some providers have been taking advantage of this kind of loophole, and trying to locate at much higher heights, so this is just to be ahead of that, so.
Any discussion you guys want to have?
I guess I'm curious, is the towns that are being faced with these kind of surprise 120-foot, you know, municipal broadband towers, so is this something that these companies are allowed to do as a matter of right, based on this particular loophole that has been flagged right now?
Correct. Entry into the right-of-way is allowed unless there's an ordinance restricting it by virtue of police power, so in the absence of an ordinance restricting the height, there is virtually no limit to the height.
And so that's what we'd be doing by, this resolution is?
Exactly.
Curtailing that. 120 feet's awfully large.
And I looked up the company, it's one of the largest privately-held cell facilitation companies, so I think they're just going to try to get away with as much as they can. I guess you get bigger, bigger coverage if you're taller. Anything else we want to kick around on this? Everybody have a motion on this?
I'll make, I'll make a second motion for tonight, adopting...
No, you just make a motion to recommend the board...
Okay, this is a motion recommending the board adopt an ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Superior, amending Article 31 of Chapter 16 of Superior Municipal Code to regulate the maximum height of telecommunications facilities located on the town-owned property and within public rights-of-way. Ordinance number O dash blank, series 2016.
Is there a second?
Do we, can I, do we want to say the height? You want to just say 40 foot? Is that what?
Right, to amend the municipal code, so any telecommunications facility located on town-owned property or within any public right-of-way shall not exceed 40 feet in height.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there a second on this?
I'll second the motion.
That being the case, everybody ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we, can I, do we wanna say the, the height? You wanna just say 40 foot? Is that what?
Right, to amend the municipal code, so any telecommunications facility located on town-owned property or within any public right-of-way shall not exceed 40 feet in height.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there a second on this?
I'll second the motion.
That being the case, everybody ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any staff announcements or anything like that?
Only a quick announcement is that we won't have a meeting on July 5th, so I'll send out an email so that everyone else knows as well, but I think we'll probably meet back again. Guess that would be...
July 19th?
Yeah, but we won't have a meeting on the 5th, so happy holiday.
Anything from council?
Thank you, Steve.
That being the case, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting.